Hello, hello, hello. Thank you guys for joining us for another, um, interview today with, uh, Fletch Pata's best, um, and with Hollywood now as well as, um, KS News, which is all of our shows on King's time entertainment. And thank you guys for tuning in for another interview with King's time entertainment company and media group. Um, we have another great interview to for you today with the KS News program. And, uh, we always start off by thanking all of our supporters, our sponsors. The, um, the, uh, King Solomon, uh, media group is, is growing very rapidly. We want to thank you guys for your response, your participation. We are now on, um, all social media networks as well as we'll be streaming live very, very soon. And we could not do this without you guys support. So make sure you guys subscribe, follow and just comment and share. Please share this video as well as all other videos. We cannot do what we do without our sponsors and our partners. We want to thank our sponsors and our partners for their commitment and their support. Um, heart to heart for you dot org, heal to heal. The USC Black Alumni Association, the Moreland Greenwood Foundation, as well as the Pioneer Credit with Dr. Marlon Hester Senior, also a partner of ours. So make sure you guys reach out to our sponsors and our partners and let them know you heard about them here on the King Solomon Entertainment Platform. And we just continue to thank you guys for wonderful, wonderful, um, support as well as everyone grows on this platform with us. Um, heart to heart for you dot org. Um, heal to heal is also donating a hundred pairs shoes to our wonderful, wonderful King Solomon Network. And we're going to be, um, picking from our subscribers list. And we're going to be sending out, um, wonderful, um, pairs of shoes, men, women, and children to our subscribers. So make sure you guys subscribe and take, um, part in that. We just getting the momentum going. And we're going to be doing a picking real soon for those prize winners, for those who subscribe and continue to support and share our wonderful platform. Today, we also, um, have another great guest with KS News. Um, that's coming up and I want to just make sure I acknowledge my guests. I see you. Uh, when I get to the intro, I'll bring you right in. And also if you are interested in becoming a sponsor and a partner with King's time entertainment, please, King, uh, go to kingsolomonentertainment.tv, kingsolomonentertainment.tv, which is our official website. And please make sure you, um, connect with us on the email list and reach out to us and say you want to be a sponsor, you want to be a partner and how we can move forward and making that happen. Um, we want to also, um, know that, uh, we got wonderful things coming up as far as entertainment as our monologue contest. So if you are actor inspiring talent, please send in your sixty minute monologue tape to kingsolomonentertainment.tv and we will be drawing, um, from the best submissions. And you'll be in front of a, um, professional panel to give you wonderful feedback. If not, if they're interested, they'll probably assign you, but definitely before a professional panel. And so today, um, we want to start the submissions for that, the monologue, sixty second monologue, the kingsonentertainment.tv. And also if you are interested in supporting this, um, this, um, network directly cash out Venmo, PayPal, and Zelle, all under name of King Solomon Entertainment Company. Please, any side donation will help as we continue to develop this network. Um, again, we thank you so much for tuning in. We have another great interview with KS News and we're going to go and get our, um, special guests and bring them in and start the interview. So please guys, continue to do what you continue to doing, supporting, subscribing, sharing, and letting people know. Every Tuesday, uh, from one to five, we'll be having our guests on, um, our various platforms. Fletch Pata is best, um, KS News, King Solomon News, as well as, um, Hollywood Now, uh, where we interview one-on-one celebrities and star power and influencers in the entertainment business, as well as the honor humanitarianism with the Fletch Pata's best flagship. And the KS News is for all the wonderful, great, um, topics and, um, issues that's going on that plague our community and also empowering with this, us with awareness, information by bringing on professionals to come and share their expertise with us. Um, so stay tuned. Our, our guests would, um, start in one second. So today we, uh, have a friend to the show. She's been on before and she's coming on again. And we want to start the interview with our friend to the show, former council member Jan Perry, former general manager of Economic Work, Workforce Department. And we're here today and we are laboring this, um, corruption in government. And so we definitely want to start the platform and start the interview with, uh, redistricting, redistricting. And so,
Redistricting, yeah.
Redistricting. So that's, uh, one of, one of the many of ways that one could be, um, corrupt in government. And so let's start off by, uh, first let's introduce yourself. For, for your own self, um, Jan Perry, please introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm former councilwoman Jan Perry. I was councilwoman in the ninth district from two thousand one to twenty thirteen in the city of Los Angeles in the great ninth district.
Yes, thank you so much for, um, joining us again. We always love to have you on, friend to the show from Councilroom Jan Perry. And the title of this, um, platform or this interview is Corruption in Government. And we want to center it around redistricting and the census. And so please explain to us, because according to the definition, uh, if the sole purpose of redistricting is to make sure that each council member have an accurate count of, uh, a fair count of population of people growth in their district, right?
Well, it happens across the country and it happens every ten years. And it follows the census. So you know, you've been seeing the commercials and all the size of, uh, the United States census. So we count our population every cent, every ten years. It's mandated by the US Constitution. And based upon population shifts and need for representation, one person, one vote, ethnic demographic, uh, growth, um, you draw political boundaries based on that. So what you see here, you see the drawing of the lines for school district, council district, county supervisor, your congressional representatives. Um, so that's, that's what we're about to go into.
Yes. And so, uh, please, um, talk about now the census analysis, because it comes out every year. So,
Comes out every year.
Every ten years.
Yeah. Sometimes because we have such a significant homeless issue now.
Yeah.
Uh, they do mid, mid, uh, counts between the ten years. So you know, you might see some that are every five years, even more than that because the situation is so severe.
Yes. So please, um, after that report comes out, when it comes out, um, please, do you, do, do the council member get it? Who gets it? How is it analyzed? Like what do it really says?
Well, it's a public document. So it's, you know, you, you, the public have a right to see it. And, uh, it should be posted, uh, you know, on our city's website. Uh, your congress member may even post it. You know, there's lots of ways to access the information. And what you, you, you look is, has there been a lost population? Have people moved out in an area, um, you know, uh, for, for followers? You checking out to see where do African Americans live? Uh, where do Latinos live? Where, where do people who define themselves Caucasian live? Where do Asians? Uh, because nobody lives in one nation anymore like the two, you know, when we were growing up now. So you, you have to look for the concentrations and also people live
Yes.
than before. So you know, you find a lot more grandparents actually raising their,
Yes.
body too. Um, you know, just, just differences. So you draw the line. On if you're drawing a council, you have six council districts. So you look at the population in the city of Los Angeles. And you, you kind of divide that by fifty. Now, and then you drive of how many in a council district. Now my, there's always your count because it's hard to count people. People who are not dead, but on the street. It's hard to count children. As you know, you have to find an adult item. And you know, there's all sorts of checks. So we all, your count that we always, we're always trying to catch.
Yes. So please explain the transparency allowance. Uh, we talking about a public testimony and the, uh, undue political influence. How, how do we, um, check the checking balance of transparency, the allowance of transparency?
Well, once these hearings, a couple of things. You gotta watch how they choose the commissioners for the redistrict. Number one. Number two, you have to sign up and for the meeting. And then, you know, I don't know where to see in terms of the, by the, you know, the fall. My guess is it's gonna be in it. So people will be on Zoom, probably. Which in some ways makes it easier.
Yes.
You could sign in and broadcast Instagram live, no type commentary. Uh, so you'd be really connected and anybody who watches, follow, follow with your perspective. Um, but the thing that the public watch, look up and make sure that they match with their vote. Because folks will take one thing, vote on,
Yeah. Yeah. So, um, and, and, and doing that, so how could one, uh, uh, how do one end up in, in government corruption on the, on the wrong side of the redistricting? How do I end up on the wrong side of it?
Well, oh, I have this that I keep telling with, you know, you, you do these jobs in public service, you have to really stand for something greater than yourself.
Yes.
One, you cannot be in these, as you know, you're your first. Okay? You cannot, priorities, gotta make the people that you've taken an oath to protect to be your first. Yes. Their needs above yours. Because quite frankly, you're gonna get paid. So you might do what's right. So that's one. Two, you have to try to make that, you know, pay attention to the signs of drawing these district lines. You look where the populations are and, and re, and the apportionment is not an opportunity to reward political and punish your political enemy.
Yeah.
That's why parks and that opinion people that you may have Los Angeles times. Because I represent not only South Los Angeles, Angeles, and a lot of people who are very feel that, oh gosh, town is like a gold mine. And you know, you're gonna raise untold some because you'll be leveraged on people on their development. Get money. Now there wasn't in on the county. Allegedly have done that. But you know, at the, at the end of the day, you're either an honest or you're not.
Yeah.
Do the work or you're not.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's to be a bottom line. And in regards to accountability, like how do, how do we, uh, because you know, and, and, and traditionally thinking about redistricting and what it means, when you talking about expansion of a, a district, you think, uh, parallel, you know, and think straightforward. But we're seeing now that it's jumping all over the place as if it has a hidden agenda and not just the fairness of everyone having a fair population representation of their district. It seems as if certain area or a certain entity in your district or in a certain district, they want that and they do all this looping and changing. And it's not like, you know, from Chris Shaw, El Segundo, Chris Shaw to El Segundo, Stalker. It's we want this area where the Coliseum is, then he jump over here. So it's not a clear concise, um, of where this redistricting happening when you come out expensive for population reason, it's driven by something else.
Well, again, driven by a personal agenda. That's what you call mandering. Um, and that's spelled B E R R Y M A N D E R I N G, gerrymandering. Some do that because they want to help their friends out and draw their friends into a district so that their friend can run for the office. Or if they don't like somebody and they want to make sure they can run for us, they'll draw them out of a district.
Yeah. Yeah. So,
These districts that look like, you know, fishes or cows or something, they just make no sense at all. They could be after some real estate, they can let on, uh, a developer to, uh, get some money.
Yeah. And so what, what, so I know you mentioned accountability as far as, uh, transparency and also other mechanisms, mechanisms, how we could, uh, kind of rebut this or refute this in ways of lesser, um, term time or, uh, making sure that you don't keep the same person in power for a long period of time. Uh, what?
We're talking, so present.
Yeah.
And make the presidency, you rotate. And in that way, there's no possibility a person can consolidate power and control. So, you know, across the desk. Because you know, the people who engage in that kind of, know that a year goes quickly, you got an agenda. And it might be more focused on and less focused on that they shouldn't be doing.
Yeah, that's a good idea. But also about the status quo process on how we even, um, go about, um, the rules, uh, 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 you know, creating the rules and then sticking to the rules or how we even do this whole process itself with independent, um, well, independent, right, independent, um, um, people that will come in to, to do it, but didn't hold them accountable as well instead of picking people from the council to appoint.
And so the interview presents a whole different, much more difficult. Because independent expenditures are committees that have no limits put in them. And at least in theory, they should coordinate candidate. So theoretically, lay back and just be lazy. And before they file, say, hey, Joe, you're running for this office. Throw a million dollars into that account and spend it on my behalf. Uh, you know, that's really, really great, you know, uh, but don't call me. So other than having independent expenditures that have to disclose who they are and when they put money into their account, spend on behalf of a disclosure. There's no other.
Yeah.
Go and buy a seat.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's, 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 it's seem like it's just ambiguous in the sense of no accountability, no clear way of how this should be done. Um, and although you, you, you have to wait till some type of scrutiny comes. And it seems like the scrutiny comes from within because of, of the net, nobody knows what's going on. And so, uh, you know, I guess when they don't continue to play a flair, then somehow this become exposed. But if it's clear on how it's, it's, it's established and how we must, you know, continue to move in it and accountability and the checking balance is already there within the structure of it, it will be a less, more challenging for them to get away with any, any type of corruption. And so because it's so ambiguous on how this is, um, even done, that's why a lot of the scrutiny and a lot of the corruption comes in.
Other tip, people need to, one place to find, see what an expenditure looks like. Go to this Los Angeles Ethics, uh, Mission, uh, that their page, their website. And you go all the way up, campaign contribution. And there you will find independent expenditures. Then also go to vote.net and pick the name of a candidate. Check out and see if they've had expenditure. They'll be posted there.
Yeah.
Educate themselves and, and begin to track where people are. Does the money tell?
Yeah. What, and, and, and so in, in your own perspective, um, those, um, council members who get like heavy industrial areas or heavy commercial areas, how is that fair, uh, in regards to, of course, when you're raising campaigns? Say it's a downtown area, they have a lot of commercial corporations. How is that fair to the other council members who don't have as many corporations or in their area as far as raising money to be reelected? Is that fair? Why don't they ju, why don't they redistrict those to be, to be divvied between the council members?
So we just based on population, not a commercial or industrial property, nor is it based on property tax revenue is, uh, in, in district. So it's a little complicated, but I'm gonna down to you like this. Um, areas where there are people with a level of interest. Yeah, it, it's, people who need, but don't have much. That means that you as a candidate, you may, you were gonna normally make a hundred calls, you got to, you know, three thousand calls, you know, you just gotta work harder and that's, that's the reality.
Yeah. So then you could do about, um, soliciting other corporates outside the, outside the district or?
Don't have to just raise money.
Yeah.
Call whoever, including you can call all over the country. I mean, if you're telling case of why you're running for, or to you, you can call anywhere.
Yeah. Yeah. So, uh, what do you think about, um, this coming election in regards to, uh, the voter suppression? It seems as if, um, the mail-in order with the, uh, post office going through is, um, restructuring as well as, um, before there was a lot of polling place options. Now you have to go to the local, um, you know, city hall or whatever, one location in a, in opposed to before, where it was several, the, the rec center, the local church, the dealership. It now is, is one, so it could be longer lines. It's, uh, uh, some people say it's there to discourage. What's your take on that?
Well, uh, I vote by mail and as soon as I get my, down and stuff, I'm gonna drive to the post office in the mailbox. That's what I'm gonna do. Uh, I also believe in voting. Still get your, sit down and fill in internally. Uh, you know, now the news, okay, so, you know, um, I, I, well, that I heard for the, the time extended would be extended receiving ballots. Um, I would not wait until election. You can cast your ballot before that by mail. I would do that. But you know, there are some people who are vulnerable, will have to go polling place because they want to see the ballot. Um, the other option, get your ballot in advance, air it into a poll and put it in the ballot box.
Oh, that's a good idea too. Yeah. Fill it out early. Yeah. That's a great idea. Yeah. But yeah, so, but yeah, a lot of people concerned and being a lot of people, like I know before in the primary, um, that, you know, they cut it off at a certain time. And so before it was, uh, if you was in line, you could still go. Now it's like eight o'clock, they cut it. So it's, I don't know what they gonna do. I think.
Well, past primary, March the third, fourteen, the county, the election, it was a total. So, um, the people weren't up until now.
Yeah.
That should never ever. That's voter suppression.
Yeah, that, yeah, well, yeah. Yeah. It's a lot of, lot of tactics going on. Uh, it's a lot of, you know, it's, this, like I said, it's a lot of foul play and a lot of people are concerned, but yet they're still, um, committed to coming out to vote. But, um, there's, you know, a lot of frustration come with it, which is probably by design. But a lot of people are still not discouraged. They're gonna, um, go, going to still show up. But it's, um, trying to get the awareness out of what they can expect, you know, pack of lunch or whatever.
Some water.
And it might be one though, a hundred and ten degree, you know, how the weather been out here been crazy, hundred and ten degrees.
In case you have to get out of line, go to the.
Yeah, no, it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be serious, but people are still, um, very encouraged. People are still gavenized and they say, hey, I'm, I'm going to vote. I'm going to definitely exercise my right to vote and I'm going to still show up. It just, it's, it's really obvious about the voter suppression is real. And, uh, you know, and it's, and it's unfortunate, but we still have to come out in record numbers once again and make a difference, uh, during this, uh, fall election, uh, for twenty twenty. And so, um, so let's talk about in closing some of the, uh, accountability turnaround that we can do to, uh, just bring awareness to, uh, possible corruption. Cause I know we doing the whole follow the money series. And today we started with redistricting and, uh, under the umbrella of government corruption. But what else can we do as far as, um, civilians and, um, civil, our civil engagement to kind of alleviate or make obvious, um, the things that's going on in local government and in government period as far as accountability, town hall meetings, um, um, what we, can we do to say, hey, you know, we, we know something is going on?
LAvote.com, educate yourself, start learning all the, start tracking information yourself. Anybody to interpret it for, vote your city website, go to a candidate contribution. Learn about that, understand what independent expenditure means. And then, uh, start educating yourself about what's on the ballot. And when you, when you talk about what's on the ballot, be mindful that we can teach each other how to analyze ourselves instead of having somebody follow us.
Yes.
So you can make an informed decision. And there's places like the California League, uh, Way to Women Voters. They are a bipartisan group who analyzes everything on the ballot. And they're on that site, you probably download, maybe you can find them. And your next talk about, be on the ballot, what are the, what are the, what are the impacts? And what cost the taxpayer, what their vote?
Yeah, that's very important. But, um, one of the last questions that I had was, uh, how do government corruption, uh, tie into redistricting? Cause you said it was obvious, but kind of explain that a little bit.
Start acting crazy about drawing, that, because there's no reason to act that way. There is a sign, okay? It's a mathful, uh, data analysis of popular growth, population decrease, the ethnic mix of the population, the, the age, and all that. But when you saying, hey, uh, oh, come here, I want, as I vote on this. In exchange that I'll, uh, I'll throw like council district or, you know, I'll drop a person into your account, you know, that'll help you in your reelection. You know, they're, they, they got money. So that'll help you in raising money down the road. So when you see that kind of behavior, that's kind of the gateway for corruption.
Yeah. Well, a lot, a lot of the, uh, politicians are naive to those type of taxes or they play. Like I said, they play like they got amnesia, but, um, until it comes back to haunt them.
Yeah, but see, gotta have your words, learn, analyze it for themselves. Don't rely on other people to, you know, inform you. That's why I said LAvote.com. That's why I said, go to the city site and go to Ethics Commission. Go to the far right column and look for expenditure so that you can, so that you know what's going on, that nobody has to tell you, you saw it for yourself.
Yeah, but the, a lot of incumbents, they, they, they get inside and they, they adapt to the culture. And if the culture inside of the incumbents elect, elected is corrupt, that's the culture that they take on. Because they feel as if that's a survival tactic to stay in office long term when you're playing the game with corrupt, or fellow corrupt politicians.
Yeah, but you don't have to be that, you know, and if you live your life, then you always have to, uh, be stronger. So depends on who you are, whether you like to live that way or not. I, I certainly don't.
You know, you know, I know, but.
That would be very, very stressful.
Yeah, but when you look at the bigger picture, even, even when some has been indicted and others are not. But it's like you knew others was involved. But it's like you knew others was involved, you know?
Well, I, a- as part of that process, you see people, you know, being called to account. You know, they'll, they'll talk because, you know, they'll wanna save themselves. I think that's human nature. So the people will want to save selves by, you know, and well, yeah, I wasn't alone, so.
Yeah, 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 no, it's.
Yeah, there was other people.
No, it, it, it is definitely a um, a game that's been around for a long time, a machine that's been around for a long time. And I, and I know it is a lot of uh paradoxically sold out of good, you know, uh mixed in with a lot of, with a lot of bad. But we, we cannot let that discourage, uh, and yeah, and we have to continue to be the good. And continue to practice good politics and a lot of people don't want, don't want to even be bothered with it because it's so. You know, uh corrupt or whatever, but.
Get away from it, so like.
You can't.
Deal with it, okay?
Yeah.
And how to uh be about something better than yourself.
Yeah.
It ain't just about, you know, you.
Yeah, but I believe it's turning around, because when you, when you get good politicians. And you know what it's like to have someone that you feel like is really representing you in the Republican inside, you know what it's, what it's like. And you, and that's what you want and that's what you wish every politician was like. But you know what it's like when you get some good politicians that really is for the people and representing. Uh, you know, there's the good, uh, uh, have a good society that we all um desire, a great utopia that we all work hard for and all wanna have, you know? So um definitely, you know, continue to do what you're doing and please let people know how they can get in touch with you and what you have going on.
Um, actually, I just lost my website, janperry.com, and then uh, uh, I, you know what? Uh, I'm on Instagram, send me a message, uh, on it, I'm on Instagram, you know, twelve million times a day.
Okay, so for sure, definitely reach out to Jan Perry, janperry.com on IG and the social media. And um, thank you so much for coming today.
Thank you.
Thanks you guys, tune in for, and definitely come subscribe, share this video. And um definitely continue to connect with us on kingsolomonentertainment.tv and all social media. Um, um Twitter handles and all our handles. And definitely uh participate and get involved and stay tuned for the other great things we got coming on. And we want to thank you so much, Jan Perry, and our um, uh Corruption of Government as it continues. Should be back on as we continue to follow the money and politics, probably all the way up to the election. That is good to have, and so we don't know what our next topic is going to be, but stay tuned. And we're going to continue to bring you good information and just uh empowering awareness about uh politics in, in, in a different, a fresh spin on it. Because it's empowering to be aware of what's going on around you. You cannot ignore no longer, uh, you know, although we just only, you know, experience corruption. And we feel like our vote don't count and we know how African Americans are treated, but we can, we still cannot let that discourage us. On, on how we can make a difference in the political and our civic engagement. And, and you know, definitely with, with voting, but so many other ways as well. And we need to be informed about that as well, so it's very empowering, always a pleasure to have you on, friend to the show. Uh, former council, city council member, Jan Perry, thank you so much, definitely reach out, have a great rest of your day. See you next time, okay? Thank you guys, all right.